2018, I'm Tom Jacobs and we're convening here at Bennington Fire Facility. I'd like to have my colleagues just introduce themselves if you could start. We have Stuart Hurd, of course, our town manager, without having to introduce himself. Go ahead.
Good evening, Jean Connor.
Good evening, Carson Thurber.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Hi, I'm Donald Campbell.
Hi, I'm Janie Jenkins.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Nancy Livey, Secretary.
Great, thank you, one and all. You know, we always start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and it's important, probably as much tonight as any other night, and probably more so. You know, the reason we have these meetings and have the ability to meet is with the sacrifice that have given by so many for so many years. You know, we could be in a situation where we wouldn't be convening, as we are, to have free and open discussion, but it's really, it's the sacrifices, the giving that has been given to us so that we can now stand and recite together the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, one and all. We're fortunate to have the minutes circulated and reviewed by all, I'm sure, as well as the warrants. I would entertain a motion for acceptance of the consent agenda and we'll talk about the proclamation afterwards.
So moved.
Second.
Any additions, corrections, deletions, and, nope, I always look first to my right. Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the consent agenda as circulated, signified by I?
Aye.
That would be unanimous, seven of us in favor of it. We also have a proclamation, Small Business Saturday, it will be a week from Saturday. Time flies. So if the esteemed Vice Chair could suggest the proclamation, we will move accordingly.
You bet. Small Business Saturday, November 24th, 2018. Whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are millions of small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses and are responsible for 65.9% of the net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. And whereas small businesses employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 90% of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community. And whereas 89% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long. And whereas 73% of all consumers who reportedly shopped small at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family. And whereas the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small, independently owned businesses was to support their community, 64%. And whereas Bennington, Vermont supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Bennington, Vermont, do hereby proclaim November 24th, 2018, as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Dated Bennington, Vermont, this 12th day of November, 2018.
Thank you very much. Could we have a motion to accept the proclamation as read?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of accepting and proclaiming as read, signified by I?
Aye.
That's seven in favor and we all echo the proclamation and encourage everyone to participate.
Get their wallets out.
Yep, credit cards, wallets, where everything will be accepted. Chickens, pigs, everything, you know. Saturday's a big, busy, busy day. We have a proclamation to circulate and we'll do that as we have also the opportunity to receive the citizens' comment period. The first one on the agenda, the agenda, the signup sheet was Chris Bates. Chris, if you'd like to step up and speak.
Hey.
Hey.
I just want to reintroduce myself again with a new role I have and I want to thank the Bennington 2-1 constituency for electing me to the Vermont House Representative, so I just thought I'd share that with everybody.
Well, congratulations and we wish you well and encourage you to take all of the time, effort, and bring it all back.
Exactly.
Deliver the bacon to North.
All right. All right, well, I gotta run, but thank you very much, you guys.
Good, thank you. Congratulations. Joel Luntner, DVA. Yes. Good evening, Joel.
Hello. I'm here on behalf of the DVA. I'm Joel Luntner. I was here over the last spring to make a proposal for the DVA for funding for some of the initiatives that we do for downtown. The vote ended up being tied 3-3 and after the meeting I was contacted by a member of the Select Board who said, if you'd like to come back and make an amended proposal and with some more information, the Board would consider hearing that again. And I'm here to ask that if you'd consider an amended proposal with more narrow scope at your next meeting in two weeks that will help with two specific initiatives that we have ongoing and also give you a practical way to further endorse Small Business Saturday. We've got an enormous promotion that we're unleashing on Black Friday that will run Black Friday through Small Business Saturday to Christmas Eve. And we're hoping that Select Board will be able to get on board with that, with us. It's something we've been planning for maybe six, eight months now and we're really excited about it.
Great.
So I'd love to be able to come here again in two weeks and make another proposal.
I certainly would not discourage you. We'll put you on the agenda early on.
Excellent.
So we can deal with that matter. And if you have information material to share in advance of that, that would be appreciated so that we could not be surprised or not being prepared for what you might be bringing.
Sure, should I email that to you, to Stu?
Probably to Stu and then he could share it with the Board, if that's okay, Stu?
Yes, for Tom, if I may. Joel, to the best of my memory, I think one of the concerns that we had was, you know, how you were going to spend the money, the specificity, you know, where it was going to be directed and I hope that you'll come to us with that.
Precisely, absolutely. That's what we're hoping to do and also narrow it in scope, so it's really just for two specific items rather than general funding.
Okay, good. Let's not share any of the thunder, but that's good. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you much.
Dr. Dundas, do you have, I'm sorry, Joel, you're all set on, thank you very much. I just see Dr. Dundas. Do you have, you're not on the list, but had you meant to?
This particular.
Oh, you're, okay, okay. I didn't want you to feel like you were left out. Having had that brief discussion, we're fortunate and honored tonight to have continued discussion relative to the opiate situation that Bennington and across the country has experienced, is experiencing. It's interesting to note, and it's ironic, we probably, many of you have heard, the FDA is standing right behind us. They just approved an opioid painkiller a thousand times stronger than morphine. So that's really helpful to have that opportunity, to have that also on the street with what's been readily available for painkillers. So this is an area that we have to be involved as a community. What the state, what the federal government does is one thing and we're going to be hoping and expecting them to step forward, but we as a community have to deal with this ongoing and real issue. And we're fortunate enough that there, this is not the first blush, first impression that the opioid situation has been addressed and there is an ongoing discussion by a number of folks. So tonight, we're going to continue the discussion. Again, I don't think this is the last item, or the last day we're going to be discussing this, because we need a game plan. That's really why we're doing this and how our community can be responsive with all of the resources that we can bring to bear. So who's going to be addressing, leading off that discussion? Ken, is it? Come right up and introduce the team. And if you want to pull some chairs up and then we can get you close. We won't make you introduce yourselves until you get the opportunity to speak to it, but Ken, go ahead, introduce yourself and how you might want to address it, but it's a conversation. We can go from there.
Okay, my name's Ken Sigsbury. I'm the Executive Director of the Turning Point Recovery Center in Bennington. I'm also sit on the Governor's Opiate Council and I also am an Executive Committee Member of the ACT, which is our prevention group here in Bennington. I wanted to say that when I first decided to give this presentation, it was specifically going to be about data and numbers and things of that nature. And then on Thursday evening, or Thursday night, about 3:00 in the morning, I think we all have kind of a thing, we wake up and something has touched us and we have to think about something that brings us out of our sleep. And I felt I would just make the community more callous by throwing numbers because these deaths of people from overdoses have been so regular that people have become callous towards them. And they don't, they don't, you know, I'm not going to say they, because that's a bad word for me. I'm going to say that a general consensus is this is just a reoccurring problem, these deaths, that we have to accept and that's not acceptable. So Dr. Dundas came today to give us a little bit of data to start out with and then I have these ladies here today that have, you know, met with this terrible disease concerning opiates that are either suffering with a loved one or have actually lost a loved one. And we've come together kind of as a family because we all suffer because of this huge problem that we have, especially Bennington is very bad, we're having all kinds of overdoses. But just to give us a little data, you know, I was going to hit you all with data and just blow your brains with data, but Dr. Dundas is going to give us a little, a little bit of that and then we're going to move on to the ladies here, okay?
That's great, Ken. Thank you for doing the introduction.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome again.
Thank you. I wanted to give a kind of an overview of the problems that we have here in Bennington. So I wanted to start by talking about opioid abuse and addiction and how we've come to look at this problem as a disease and not a weakness or a character flaw. It's taken probably decades, if not centuries, to get to this point. It's about the worst disease one could possibly have. It's a chronic disease with a tendency to relapse and it can obviously destroy the patient and also in the process can cause a great family turmoil and wreak havoc in our community as we all can attest to. The addiction is so strong that addicts will do about anything to get the next dose, so that will, that correlates with the amount of crime that we see in the community. But medically, I wanted to talk mainly about the worst complication of narcotic abuse, narcotic addiction, and that is fatal overdoses. So nationally, about, there were about, in 2017, there were 72,000 people who died of a narcotic overdose. 72,000, when you consider that Bennington County has 36,000, that's twice the population of Bennington County. Locally, we have an average of about 10 overdose deaths per year in Bennington, the town. How did we get here? It turns out that 60% of opioid addicts start with an innocent prescription provided by their doctor. So the doctor or the dentist might do a procedure and give the patient a prescription for narcotic just in case there's intense pain after the procedure. So these 60% are innocent people, basically, could be you or I, and they have no intention of becoming an addict, but if you look at the statistics, if you take a narcotic regularly for about eight days, about 15% of those people who take the narcotic will wind up being on it a year later. And so that's a huge number of people. We all share some blame in this and the history is that around 2000, the year 2000, the drug companies, several drug companies developed some new products. The main one that you might have heard of is OxyContin. So the drug companies told the doctors that this new stuff would, had a low risk of abuse or addiction. And at the same time, the doctors and nurses were told that there was a large population out there of people in pain who deserved to get treatment for their pain. So pain became a fifth vital sign along with blood pressure and pulse rate and respiratory rate. And if patient, and so every time, in my own office, every time a patient would come through, the nurse was obligated to ask, how much, do you have pain and how would you rate it on the pain scale? And if it's greater than five, then we were obligated, we thought, to do something. So there's these two factors then, promises from the drug companies that their products were not very addicting and the undertreatment, what we perceived as the undertreatment of pain, led to a tremendous increase in the number of narcotic prescriptions that were written. So the doctors should have known better, but we didn't. And this led to an epidemic of over-prescribing. Many patients got hooked. Eventually, the doctor might say that I can't prescribe this for you anymore and the patient would then turn to the street and drug use would escalate. And the nature of that is that the addict needs more and more to get high and/or to avoid getting sick if, without the drug. It turns out that heroin is a lot cheaper than pills. Eventually, the patient might escalate his habit to using intravenous heroin. And if that's not enough, then in recent, the past two years, we've seen a lot of synthetic drugs enter the market. Tom was just talking about one of these synthetic drugs and fentanyl is a common one now that's mixed with heroin and leads to many of our overdoses. So we have a huge problem here and as I see it, the basic problem, a basic problem, was that we never came together as a community to handle this crisis. Here we are 20 years down the road from the onset and just recently have we started working together as a community. I see Jennifer Fells in the audience and she is one of the prime people who is organizing the community so that we can handle this problem. So before all of this happened, I would say Turning Point 2, wherever Ken went, okay, Turning Point 2 has had a large effect on getting people to work together. And before, I have a little hope now that maybe things are going to turn around, but it's going to take working together, as Tom said. Thank you.
Thanks, Doctor. And by the way, Jennifer, you're going to be on one of these next upcoming agendas with your group, so don't go too far out of the discussion. Thanks. Thanks very much, Doctor. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jo Lambling and I'm a founding member of Fed Up Vermont, the Fed Up Four. Three of us are here this evening. I have nothing prepared, this was kind of spur of the moment for me, but I've heard it said many times that a picture's worth a thousand words, so I brought a photograph. Photograph is of my daughter after she sustained serious injury in a car crash. Fortunately, she survived. She went home from Albany Medical Center with a prescription for Percocet, saw a trauma physician who prescribed OxyContin and because of the severity of her injuries, was easily prescribed. At some point, when it was noticed that she may have an addiction issue, she was limited or denied prescription drugs, which left her no choice but to go onto the street. I'm grateful for her survival today. She seems to be on a recovery program. She's on the Suboxone program, which is part of the hub and spokes. I don't think that we can expect Big Pharma, who caused this problem, to fix it. I think people need resources other than medically assisted treatment. They need, first of all, they need a place to detox, they need rehab facilities, and they need sober living housing. They need to be trained how to live in the universe. When one's life is spent mostly fighting severe physical pain and then addiction, it's hard to do anything in life. It's hard to have a job, it's hard to have a family. She was 24 years old, she's a mother, she's a daughter, she's a sister, she's a loving, wonderful person. I'm happy to share this.
Yes, please.
With all of you. And we need to make a change and this is an investment of our generation. Also, I might note that those over 65 are the fastest growing number of addicts who may go in for a hip replacement or a knee replacement and come out with three-month supply of narcotics. So it's a huge problem and we need the help of all of our communities to fight this. The dealers are just waiting, they're right here and it's hard to believe in the beautiful mountains of Vermont that we have this, but it is a serious, serious problem. So thanks for letting me speak to you. I'm going to have.
Maybe just before you turn the microphone over and your thoughts, you're a participant of Fed Up Vermont, did you mention that at the beginning?
Yes.
Could you just sort of give us the 38,000-foot, that organization?
Okay, well.
Maybe someone else is going to too, but go ahead.
We were formed in response to the opioid epidemic after seeing loved ones and people in our communities falling victim to this devastating illness, which is not a moral failing and I'm appreciative that that was mentioned. These are people all around us, in all of our community. It's not those people, it's us, it's our people. So we formed, we started with Fed Up, which is a rally that organizes once a year, July, August 31st. And we had our first rally on August 31st, 2017. And it was very successful and we saw a definite need for it. Within three weeks, one of our founding members lost her child to this disease. So it just accelerated our interest and our motives for making a change in the community and making a change in our state and nationally. I mean, it is just a huge problem.
Great. How old was your daughter when this started?
24.
And, I'm sorry, about, how long ago was it?
That was in 2005.
2005, great. Thank you for sharing this and, you know, your daughter seems, it sounds like she's well on the way to recovery and it's, she's got some resources.
Yes, I would like to see her have treatment other than medically assisted treatment, which she would like as well. But I hear that Suboxone's pretty tough to get off of also. So that's, we've got another generation of addicts who are addicted to the drugs that are saving them from the other drugs. So it's, doesn't make sense.
That's circle and cycle has not been broken. Great, thank you.
How do you want to take questions on this, Tom? Do you want the Board to hold their questions until the end?
You know, because I think that probably would make sense because I would monopolize the questions and I appreciate it. And so why don't we get through the discussion and presentation and then we'll open it up to further comment and I'll try not to interfere with it. If I do, Jim, you let me know.
I will.
Okay.
Promise.
Thanks. Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jerry Gilmore and I'm also a member of Fed Up.
Great.
It is Tip O'Neill, the 47th Speaker of the House of Representatives, who is credited with saying, "All politics is local." Our current opiate crisis is political, it's local, and for me, it's personal. The advent of opiates became very personal to me as it began to take its toll on my sister Bennery. She was a mother, a wife, a sister, and more importantly, the daughter of two Marines, my parents, John and Alma. Before they were married, each enlisted in the Marines the day after Pearl Harbor. I note this is important because anyone familiar with the Corps is aware of the values and discipline instilled in those who serve in the Marines. Semper Fi, always faithful to Corps, country, and family. Learning the values of honor, courage, and commitment is how we were raised. Honesty and integrity were characteristics expected of us. As a young adult, Benny was a successful daycare owner and later a successful Realtor. She was also a talented artist and musician. After a difficult emergency C-section delivery of her son and again later with a back injury, she was prescribed opiates. She was often prescribed large quantities and higher and higher doses. These were considered safe and acceptable by various doctors as they were aggressively, shamelessly, and fraudulently represented by pharmaceutical reps. It became the central battle of her life until it ended her life. On March 28th, 2016, a double dose of Suboxone coupled with compromised breathing from asthma reduced my funny, vibrant sister to an urn of ashes. My sister was not her addiction. That addiction stole my sister from us. Her life was swallowed whole by heartless greed facilitated by fraudulent, calculated marketing. Just like the greed that formulated and encouraged addiction to tobacco, so goes Big Pharma with opioids. When will we stop blaming those victimized by this multi-billion dollar machine that chews up our citizens and spits them out for profit and put the blame and require accountability squarely where it belongs? squarely where it belongs? In closing, I want you to know my sister was not a useless junkie. Tax dollars are not being wasted on Narcan for Narcan parties. Settlement from that other greedy industry, the tobacco companies, are funding Narcan as well it should. You can blame the greedy insurance companies for high copays, not tax dollars being spent on Narcan. And lastly, for any of you who disparage the use of Narcan to save a life, perhaps you need to acquaint yourself, reacquaint yourself with the definition of protect and serve. Semper Fi.
Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm Wendy Galbraith. I'm also a member of Fed Up. I don't have anything prepared either, but I thought I'd share some of my story. My son, Carter Stone, about three years ago, had a car accident, and the doctor prescribed opioids to take care of the pain. When the prescriptions ran out, he went to the street and became addicted, and eventually went and used heroin, started using heroin. I didn't know anything about this, because I didn't know what addiction looked like. This is all sort of foreign to me, until his life was completely falling apart, and I encouraged him to go to rehab. So he came, he was in New Jersey, and he came to Vermont, detoxed, and there was, I had no idea how to help him. I didn't know where to call, what to do, what services were available, and when I found that there was very little in the state. He went to Serenity House when he detoxed on my couch, because there was nowhere else for him to go. And that was a nightmare, and I was terrified that he was going to die. He went to Serenity House for two weeks, because that's all Medicaid would give him, which was a terrible program and a complete waste of time. The next day he got out, he relapsed, and it continued a downward spiral until he was such a mess that he finally decided he was going to try rehab again. And since there was no place in this state that would give him more than a couple of weeks, we sent him to New Jersey, and he had a three-month at a long-term sober living I continue to learn more and more about this disease and the fact that it is a disease. It's a brain disease and a disease of chronic relapse. I thought he was good after three months. He thought he was good. He'd got a job, got an apartment, and in a moment of weakness, he used, and it killed him. So the picture I'm sharing is a picture of, from his funeral. He was 32 years old. He was a beautiful person. He had hundreds and thousands of friends. He had a wonderful job opportunity. He had a place to live. He had, he thought he had life in the bag. And this monkey on his back, which was a sickness, was not cured yet. We need long-term, at least a year, structured sober rehabilitation. We need to work together as a community to bring together all our forces, the mental health, the hospitals, the police departments, the, you know, all these different programs so that we can provide some sort of a recovery community, recovery campus, where we can house our neighbors who are suffering, you know, who are addicted. This doesn't just happen to anybody. It happens to all walks of life. I continue to have friends calling me, saying, "What am I going to do? My kid's doing this." I'm like, "Oh, my God." And I don't know where to send them. I don't have answers. So we really need to look seriously at what we're going to do. The state of Vermont offers very little. The government of Vermont wants to provide medical assisted treatment, and they think that's the answer. It's not the answer. Maybe it's temporary, but it's not the answer. We need long-term places where they can go and they can relearn how to live their lives. So that's my story, and I'm looking forward to seeing how we can all work together as a community to make a difference.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Hi, my name is Wendy Lawrence.
Nice to see you, Wendy.
Thank you. My son, I think, is probably the youngest out of the group that I'm going to speak about. I'm sure there's many others out there that also fall into the category of my son. My son was a freshman going into high school, and I think my son's going to tie into a couple of people that are on the board here. So it's not all doom and gloom for my story, which is good. He was a freshman going into high school. He's very athletic, very energetic, a very stoic young man. And what does every young athletic boy want to do when they go into high school? They want to play football. So he had not played football before, but he had played baseball and soccer, and so he went out for football. And unfortunately, he didn't even get to play his first game. He got injured, and he actually still finished practice that day, and then called me on my way home from work and said, "Really think I should get this checked out?" And we went to the ER, and sure enough, it, he broke his finger with sheath damage and volder plate damage. And that started our journey. And he ended up with two surgeries here in town with excessive opiate prescribed for a 14-year-old. At the time, I was not aware that that was excessive. I was trusting the physician. People tell me that was a huge mistake for me, that I should have known better. I know it now. I didn't know it then. I was trusting. They prescribed it during his surgery and during his rehab, and he went right into another surgery and another rehab. And then he needed another surgery, a third surgery, and I said, "Yeah, we need more expertise." He ended up in Boston. He had a third surgery, and that's when I learned that he was definitely overprescribed because they gave him minimal. And then he needed a fourth surgery. And he actually needed a fifth surgery. And we were in Boston scheduling that, but we had discovered the night before the extent at that point of his addiction. And that was probably a good two years into this at that point. So we did not have the fifth surgery. We knew we had a much bigger problem going on. Three years into this, he came to me, and I don't think he really knew that he had a serious addiction, but he said that he was depressed and suicidal. And this is a teen boy who, he didn't understand what was going on, but he knew that he had a problem, and he, at that point, was thinking he didn't even want to live. So we got him into therapy, and we continued to fight that battle on top of his addiction. And in 2014, he did graduate. That was four years into this battle. But at that point, his addiction had totally taken over. He barely graduated. He was, at this point, getting things off the street, because of course he wasn't getting prescribed anything. And his addiction was completely and totally out of control. The family life was a nightmare. The fear, addiction changes the individual. I remember going to bed at night, saying, "I don't even know this person that's sleeping across the hall from me." I went a year when my son didn't even speak to me, because it wasn't my son anymore. The drug was controlling him. I came home from work many nights. You don't know the fear you live until you come home, and you have to go up to say hi to your son. Then you say a prayer before you knock on that door, because you don't know what you're getting on the other side. You don't know if your son is alive or not, and that's what you have to face every day when you come home. You lose yourself in it. I had gotten to the point when I couldn't even breathe. I was at the doctors myself, because I couldn't breathe, just the basic, wake up in the morning and breathe. That's the impact on a family. So it's not just an individual disease, it's a family disease. On a good note, in 2016, so six years into this, my son went to rehab for the last time. And this was, one, two, three, I believe his fourth attempt at rehab. And he went to rehab, and he came out, I could tell, a totally changed person. Something, something stuck. And he has been in recovery since 2016, just over two years in recovery. Ken was a huge part of that. He got connected with Turning Point. Well, I'm going to say, first of all, my son's recovery was him. Huge part of that is my son. He deserves absolutely all the credit for that. But here at Turning Point, in order to be successful, we need the resources here. My son came home knowing that when he left that people, places, and things, he had to change everything, and he came back here not having a whole lot to look to, but he got Turning Point. And Ken gave him that hope and that direction. And I remember the night, Ken connected him with a job at Turning Point, and he was so excited that night when he came out of that meeting and said, "I just got offered a job." And he's the youth coordinator, I believe he now has a new title, but that first position was a youth coordinator, to be that voice and be that face out in the public to say, "You can do this. You can be successful. You can fight this and get on the other side of this battle and be successful." And he was so excited to have somebody believe that he was worthy and that he could succeed after the battles that he has had for so long. And I remember how excited he was that night. And for the last year and a half to two years now, he has been at CCB, and he has been attending college and taking courses and building his future and doing amazing things. So the strength that this young man has is incredible, and I could not be any more proud of him. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you all. We should give them all a hand. Ken, we've heard, and you know, this is probably one of the most inspirational, thoughtful discussions that we've ever had, at least during my time on this board. The thoughtfulness of these women sharing, you know, in the public, their experiences, the families' experiences, just go beyond our ability to actually even comprehend, much less, you know, come to an understanding. But we don't want to just stop with, you know, what we hear tonight. Lead us to the next part of this discovery.
Okay. So what I failed to mention when I started, and I usually start my meetings this way, especially when we're talking about opiates. I'm Ken, and I'm an addict in long-term recovery. I'm an opiate addict, and I've been clean a really long time. So I understand, I went through the pain of becoming addicted to opiates, to building up a tolerance so high that the opiates didn't give me what I needed anymore. It was a miracle, I felt it was a miracle when I first started taking them, because it didn't only relieve all the pain in my physical being, but also in my mental being. So it was very helpful to me at the time, until it started taking everything away, until I got to the point where, what usually happens, you go to, you know, you have jails, institutions, and death. Those are the three options. So what we've done at Turning Point is we're focusing on the individual as a whole. We focus on purpose, we focus on community, and we focus on service. Those are the three things. Now, when I go, and we go a couple of times a month to the inpatient facilities, the two that we have here in the state of Vermont, and we give a presentation, and the first thing we do after we introduce ourselves is ask, "Who has been here before?" Over half the hands go up every single time. The recidivism is crazy. Treatment is wonderful, I'm not distant treatment, you know, but the thing is, is people get out of treatment, and they go back to the same people, places, and things that brought them there. They go back and they sleep on their dealer's couch, because they don't have anything. Their lives have been destroyed. Or they go back to a significant other they're still actively using, or they're just on the streets, you know, and selling, selling their bodies for whatever, so they can get $10 or $12 to buy another bag. So it's insane. The treatment's wonderful, but what happens is you go from this very safe, secure place to right back out to the tragedy that brings you back every single time. So I understand, and I beg and I plead, and I've gotten right in the middle of this opiate epidemic since I started in 2017, and with the help of legislators fought my way onto the Opiate Council. They didn't have a single opiate addict on the Opiate Council, and I was the first one, and it took me three months to get on with the help of all our legislators, because I was up in arms when I found out that we didn't have someone representing Bennington County, which was crazy. So, and then, you know, I'm also very heavy into prevention. We're, you know, we've been giving presentations at the schools, we're in the health classes, we're just like Thomas will give, tell his story. Wendy's son, Thomas, Wendy was just talking about, and the kids will understand, and they get very interactive with Thomas, so there's a lot of good feedback. But what we need here in Bennington, we need recovery housing. We need to be able to take the people from the treatment, put them right into recovery housing, and I mean recovery housing done right. I mean recovery housing with recovery programming, random drug testing, curfews, the demand for them to move towards supporting themselves and just work them back into the community and make them whole again by giving them purpose, changing their community, and eventually, when they're, when they're well or getting better, they can help somebody else. And it would be like a domino effect. If we can create this community of recovery that we've started, which is going to be impossible for me to do if we don't have something that's going to be the buffer from treatment. And we have to surround them with clinical counseling. We have to surround them with recovery programming. We have to surround them with how to live again, because their lives were solely engulfed in the finding, the getting, and the using of drugs on a daily basis. Finding, getting, and using. That's what we do when we're actively using. That's our life. And if we don't have enough for today, we need to find it. If we don't, if we do have enough today, we worry about tomorrow when we're actively using. But we have to have recovery housing. It's the only way that we're going to decrease the recidivism so we can get people into treatment right away. Cut down on the recidivism, you know, the problems go away as far as getting people into treatment. The community becomes a better place, because people start to learn again how to live their lives clean, and it's a good life, and we demonstrate that as peers at Turning Point. So, you know, with that being said, I just want to say thank you very, very much for giving us this opportunity to speak our piece, and if there's any questions, we'll take them.
Thank you. Gene?
Oh, man, I've got so many questions. First of all, thank you for thanking us, but you deserve a tremendous amount of thanks, much more than we do, all of you, so. I have some medical questions which Dr. Dundas may need to answer.
Sure.
So why, do you know why some people become addicted and why others don't?
That's unknown.
Okay.
I think there's a correlation-
I think there's a correlation between addiction and adverse childhood experience. So that's the only thing that I am aware of, but it affects everybody and it's probably not random, there's probably something genetic about it, but...
Okay. Another medical question. So if someone's addicted, and forgive me for my ignorance, I'm just trying to understand. Is it possible to wean someone off of heroin or it's not, it's not something you can sort of back off of slowly like you can other medications when you're trying to get people off of them?
Yeah. That doesn't work.
Okay.
But we do substitute, as you probably know, we do substitute other drugs for the street drug that the person comes in on.
Another question I had for Wendy was, what was it about the recovery program that your son was successful in? What made that different than the other ones that he had tried?
I wish I knew.
Maybe he was just ready? I don't, I don't know.
I think he was just ready. I've had that conversation with him. I asked him if it was something a counselor said, if it was something in his life that had occurred, an aha moment, and he said he does not know himself.
Interesting. And this is like a more financial business question, but it seems to me, you know, you've all talked about the length of time that addicts need to be in recovery is key. And rather than cycling in and out, in and out, and continuing to relapse, it seems like if they could just get it right the first time, it would be better for the patient, better for the community, better for the family and financially probably cheaper.
Absolutely.
Is that true?
Absolutely.
I'm done, thank you.
Yeah. Insurance companies will, the first time he went, they would only cover a week.
Yeah.
Actually, most of the times that he went, because he, what'd I say, the fourth time? The fourth time he was in a month, he was in a month. I don't know how they got that for him. He kept, when he told me to come get him, he called me the night before and said, "I'm not ready." And he stayed another week, and then it was, "Come get me," and then he called me the night before, "I'm not ready." And somehow they got him a month, which was unheard of at the time.
Wow, wow.
Can I share something?
Sure.
I think we're all familiar with James Taylor.
Sure.
James Taylor was a heroin addict, and he spent nine months in McLean and never used after.
Never knew what?
Never used again.
Never used after. He had the availability and the affordability that everyone deserves to be able to conquer this disease.
Thank you.
Ken, you had what sounded like a wish list item of housing. What's, I mean, not to bring it to the local level, but it's kind of what we can impact here quite a bit. Do you have a place in mind or have you talked to landlords? What's the...
Well, I was hoping maybe you guys could have some suggestions or if you have, you know, some, something we could do collectively together. I don't know what the options may be.
Have you targeted any locations in town?
We've been looking around, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of empty spaces in town, you know. I don't know, maybe at some point we could talk about what the town has for spaces, you know, something like that. You know, because I do know you have some spaces as far as, there was, you know, the depot street and a couple other places that were available. I don't know if you guys have done anything with that, but we, you know, we'd be willing to work with the town and see what we could do because we don't, you know, we don't wanna spend a lot of money just to, you know, to get a place and then do all the, you know, updates that would be required. It would be nice if there was a, you know, a property or something like that available in town. But yeah, we need, we really need, you know, to be able to transition people, you know, let them stay there about six months and up to a year in some cases to get them reestablished in the community and find out what their purpose may be and what excites them about life and how they can turn that into work.
I just bring it up because I think there might be, you know, that might be something that we could have an impact on.
Sure.
Now, I see Jennifer's not speaking tonight, but there are a lot of people in this room right now that, you know, have various touch on this issue right now. And I don't necessarily think there's any medical side of it for us, but on something as related to, you know, real estate or housing on that wish list, that's an area where we might have some influence.
Great. Great points.
Thank you all for coming. And hearing your stories is painful, especially yours, Mrs. Lawrence. Really got me. I wonder if any, Joe or you would mention the meeting that I attended along with Zerwad because it's a real ray of hope about the meeting. So anyone wanna jump on that?
We were contacted by some attorneys from DC that are currently handling lawsuits against forty defendants, starting with Purdue on down to CVS.
And Purdue is a producer of OxyContin.
OxyContin, yeah.
OxyContin.
And they aggressively marketed, they fraudulently marketed. They said that less than 1% of people who were exposed to OxyContin would become addicted. And I would urge anyone who wants to understand the perfect storm that brought about this crisis to read Dreamland by Sam Quinones. It gives the history of the convergence of the pharmaceutical companies' marketing, people losing their other methods of treatment. There was a time when you could get acupuncture, massage, all sorts of therapies that aided in a person becoming whole and recovering from addiction. And as the lobbyists contributed money so that Purdue could get a stronghold on this, the insurance companies stopped paying for other recovery methods. And along with that, when OxyContin became unaffordable for people, we had the black tar heroin people ready and waiting. There was a group from a small village in Mexico that watched for people who could no longer afford OxyContin. And they had a system where they delivered heroin. It was like, it was like the McDonald's for heroin or a pizza delivery. So there were, there were a number of situations that brought about this crisis. And that's why I said, those are the people that are responsible, they're accountable for that. They made billions and billions of dollars and they should pay for recovery, they should pay for housing, they should pay for detox, they should pay for long-term treatment to salvage these souls that have been stolen by them.
And this lawyer who we all listen to is suing on behalf of municipalities and towns all over the country.
Forty counties in Virginia.
Right.
At this point.
And here's the best part for us, we pay nothing.
That's right.
As a town that's not gonna cost us a dime.
It's not a contingency. And because they have the template of this, you can go on their website, I'll give you information after if you'd like it, and you can read the complaint. And the enormous amount of research that went into that is a template that they would use for our towns and cities here in Vermont, which would give us a reduced contingency fee. And no money would come out of pocket initially. And it's a resource.
Right. One of the best components about this lawsuit for municipalities that would benefit from it, in contrast to the settlements from the tobacco companies, the money goes with tobacco, it went to the states. And they decided where and when, or if it would be spread among municipalities.
That's right.
In this lawsuit, the money goes directly to the municipality.
Absolutely.
To decide how it'll be spent.
It wouldn't be trickled down, it wouldn't have to go to the hub and spokes program, which I am not opposed to, but I'm not thrilled about it either. I don't like seeing the fox guarding the hen house. We have a problem that was created by pharmaceutical companies, and now we have a pharmaceutical company that's gonna come here and cure it. And that would be eliminated if we, as individual communities, could decide how these monies were spent. And in reasonable and successful ways, like housing, like detox, like long-term treatment, like...
Education.
Coping skills.
You know, just to touch on the hub and spokes, because I've done my homework on this one. It's been found to be the most successful treatment modality in the country. You know, currently, abstinence only has a 90% failure rate. And with the hub and spokes format, it's the central part where you get a diagnosis. And the spokes are social services, probation and parole, housing. And you're evaluated and steered into one of those spokes. And that approach has a 40 to 60% success rate.
I'm not opposed to the format of hub and spokes, but at the end of the spoke, in many cases, it's another pharmaceutical for treatment. It's medically assisted treatment. And as I said, I am not opposed to Narcan because it saves somebody's life. I'm not opposed to Suboxone if it's used correctly and doesn't take someone's life like it did my sister, but we need other modalities to deal with this problem. And to return people to successful lives where they're not dependent on anything.
The problem is, it's hard to get somebody into the hub to begin with. I mean, we know of a family right now who's struggling with a child that is out there but ready to seek help. With all our experience in the past couple of years, we have no clue as to how to get this kid treated. So first of all, there's gotta be a cohesive hub. And then the spokes do have to incorporate all those things that you talked about, Jim, other than medically assisted. And then the community, I mean, I don't know, I was in the bicycle business years ago. You can't turn a wheel without the tire. Yeah, the rim.
Very good point.
So that's what I think we need as the community to hold it all together. And with this lawsuit, it would enable us to get a lot of this accomplished.
And there would be a board who would determine how the monies are spent.
But central to this is that, you know, we, you know, should we be successful as a municipality, boy, it would go a long way towards the kind of treatment that we need. And here's another thing, and I think you'll remember this from the meeting, I asked the attorney, I said, you know, "Is this gonna be a one-off?" He said, "No." He said, "This is, because this is not, this epidemic is not gonna stop. It's gonna continue." So we can keep going back to the drug manufacturers. And here's the hope, at least the insight that I had with it, is that, you know, insurance companies are gonna get pretty damn fed up with having to dole out the kinds of money because these businesses are insured and they're covered for this sort of thing. And when they're getting hit with billions of dollars in damages, you better believe they're gonna go after the producers of this stuff and say, "All right, that's it, no more."
A deterrent.
Yes.
As we've heard, there's a new drug that was just approved that's so much stronger than OxyContin. And they're taking out full-page ads in the Times saying how Purdue is saying how wonderful they are because they're helping fight the opioid epidemic.
Well, I'll tell you, in the research that I did with it, Purdue flat-out lied. It lied to doctors and said, "This isn't addictive? Oh, no, this'll be great for your patients."
They've been saying that for years, unfortunately.
Read Dreamland.
Yep. I'd love to continue, and I think that part of the discussion's gonna be ongoing. Because class actions, taking on big pharma, big insurance, that's the only way they're gonna get a message if there is a band that comes and hits them head-on.
That's right.
And we would like to be a part of that. We wanna make sure that when we focus on that, that we're participating in a successful venture. Because this is not something that we as just a single community can take on. This is a responsibility, I think, of all communities, all states, to finally bring, basically it brings home to roost what has been cast as benefit to the American society. And we haven't. You know, it's, "Drugs kill," this is a quote from something I'd read, and everybody reads it, "Drugs have killed more Americans than guns, cars and AIDS and everything..."
That's right.
"...that we read every night."
That's right.
And people are tired of thoughts and prayers just going out. It's time for the communities and the states to step up.
We are having meetings Wednesday, Thursday and Friday with the attorneys. The mayor of Rutland is meeting with us and them on Thursday. If you wanna jump on board, give me a call.
Where?
Wherever you want. We will come to you.
Okay. Good. We'll work on that post this meeting. But that's great.
Thank you.
Hold on, we're not done? Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to also just take a second to really thank you from the bottom of my heart. It's very meaningful and you all tell your stories very compellingly and in a way that I think has affected all of us for as long as we can imagine. The thing I struggle with with this is that it's such a huge issue and we are this little pokey town select board and sort of what can we do about it? And I've been struggling with this for a while. When that obituary came out in Burlington recently that was so well-written, Chief Del Pozo wrote a very interesting follow-up article on it. And it inspired me to ask a couple of questions out of raw ignorance about the situation. But I am interested to, if I could press you on two things. You know, Wendy and Joe, I heard you both talk about sober housing. And one of the recommendations that he suggests is to stop requiring total abstinence in recovery housing and allow people to stay, people stabilized on addiction treatment meds to live in them. And I wonder, is that consistent with what you were saying or is that something different from what you were saying?
I do, I do think that that's a place where Suboxone is under control, monitored in the beginning. You know, people need Suboxone in the beginning of humans to start moving themselves.
Suboxone was originally intended to be used for six weeks to stabilize somebody and to gradually be titrated off and then have other elements that supported them in life to continue. It's now being prescribed to people for life. And who benefits from that?
But if there is nothing else, then it's, I mean, I can understand why a doctor would prescribe it if that's the only way to keep somebody off street drugs.
Alive.
And alive. So...
But the idea of requiring total abstinence in recovery housing then, is that...
Doesn't work.
I guess it's, you know, whatever could be determined.
It doesn't necessarily have to be total abstinence in sober housing. MAT is a pathway to recovery. So we advocate, we're all pathways.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. The other piece in this, I think we'll, I'd like to revisit his recommendations because he gave a fairly specific set of recommendations to communities that I thought was pretty compelling. And maybe when we get into problem solving at our next meeting, Jennifer, we could kind of go through this list with you. But two of the recommendations involve the drug that I'm not really familiar with, Buprenorphine?
Buprenorphine.
Buprenorphine?
Yes. That's Suboxone without naloxone.
Okay, I see. Okay. So two of his suggestions were to give out Buprenorphine at needle exchanges and also to give it out at the emergency room to anyone who presents with an addiction. And I know there's a street value to that stuff, but is that, is that something that could be effective in a community, a small-scale community, or is that something that would be, would have unintended consequences?
If I understood your question, it's about using Buprenorphine. Buprenorphine is combined with Narcan to create Suboxone, that's what Suboxone is. And for an emergency room to give Buprenorphine to people who present, say, with an overdose has been done in many places, but it requires that there's a very good follow-up system with that particular patient. You can't just give out the drug from the emergency room and say, "Sayonara." You have to have a place for that patient. You have to have a place for that patient to go to get support. And that's one of the things that is happening in the community that there might be, well, before, last year, for example, if you, if an addict came to the emergency room with an overdose, he might be discharged if he were stable. And if, and he would be given a list of places where he could call for help. But when he calls the next morning, he finds that there's a three or four-week wait to get into a treatment program. And, but there is some hope that with new faces in the community that there would be a marked reduction in the wait time, maybe even same day or next day. That's really what we need, but it's just as infancy at this point.
Thank you. I may want to press a little more on that when we get to some of the medical, medical But thank you for those, thank you for those answers. Did any of you have a chance to look at the, at the chief's response? I don't know if it went through your circles or not, but...
Not yet.
Okay, I'd be interested to know from anyone who has an opinion, I'd be, I think our board would be interested to know what Burlington's police chief is suggesting, whether or not any of those things would work for us here in Bennington. Anyway, that's...
Thank you, Don.
I also want to thank you. And I guess I'd like to hear more about optimal treatment programs. Both, are there studies out there that would be useful for us to see in terms of what sort of a complete treatment program would look like? And also, if you, if you have had any conversations among yourselves about, you know, if there were a space, what, what would it look like? What would it include? What, what's an optimal amount of time? What are the services that need to be available? You know, who needs to be part of it? So, you know, I would just love to know your, your thinking around that.
I have a friend who is working in North Carolina at a rehab facility for women. And they have a tremendous success rate. It's very, very expensive. They incorporate all sorts of life skills, yoga, Pilates, meditation. They take people out, teach them how to use a supermarket. Some don't even know how to do that. And they learn new coping skills. So that's part of required curriculum, education. So those are things that are lacking in rehab facilities now that would be very, very useful.
Is that a private institution?
Private institution.
And what makes it so expensive? Is it, is it the amount of time people are there? Is it one-to-one? Is it, what does the cost figure out?
I believe it, it might be around 15,000 a month.
But is it...
I could get more specific information.
I think it's sort of why is it that, you know...
Why?
What is, what are the services? Or, I mean, I'm just interested if there are sort of, if there's studies out there that say, if you want to have a successful program, here are the components you need, here's the minimum stay time you need, you know, just...
These things cost money. And insurance isn't, doesn't provide it. So for the average person, I can't afford 15,000 a month for treatment.
But if we want to, if we want to create something in our community, I mean, if, if we're thinking about what is it that will, will change what we do now that's not terribly successful, you know, I guess I would like to be pointed in a direction that says, here are things to look at, to be thinking about, what are the components we need to make sure we include?
I think initially you need detox, then you would need treatment.
Okay.
Then you would need recovery. And that would involve housing. It would involve counseling. It would involve, as Joe said, life skills and other, other methods that help rebuild someone's life. Addiction is an individual disease. People get addicted for different reasons. There have been studies that show that, along with the ACEs scores, people who have had traumatic, traumatic life situations find relief when they, when they experience an opiate. So I think the mental health component is a huge one that's overlooked. You know, I know of a family member who had, had a mental health episode. He spent five days in the emergency room in a cotton bath and got sent over to the retreat and was channeled into a drug rehab program. And he wasn't an addict. So, you know, I think we have to stop focusing on just addiction and find out, why is someone addictive?
Thank you.
Well-stated.
I don't have any questions this evening. I just want to thank you guys. I appreciate your bravery for coming up here and sharing these stories. I feel people get numb with the statistics and seeing your faces, personal stories and the pictures, just sharing it is very helpful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. You are the face of our community and the families are the faces of our community. And we owe it to you and the community to address with the resources and abilities that we have and find resources that we don't, class actions or otherwise. But I see this as an ongoing dialogue with Jennifer. Maybe in the next couple of weeks, we can have further, another visit. But I don't think it ends with that discussion either. I think it's going to be ongoing. There's a lot of bits and pieces that we can sort of mold together and see if they, they work with yours and Ken's and other experts' advice and direction. Because I think that's why we sit at this, you know, around this table, hear the problems but try to problem solve to the extent that we can. And we really appreciate your, your time tonight. You've really made our evening thought process. And we'll, if we sleep tonight, we'll be thinking about you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay. Thanks a lot. We'll take a five-minute break. The next item on the agenda?
Are we saving the middle? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening, Zirat. Are you going to lead us through this first part of this agenda?
I'm just going to introduce our esteemed guests. I have here representatives from Goldstone Architects and from UCS and Head Start. And as you'll remember, I think it was July 23rd or sometime at the end of July, UCS Head Start brought a proposal to the table of the select board about a proposed addition to the existing REC Center building, an adjoining building, one that would serve as a Head Start facility. So this would be a facility that currently, this is a smaller facility in North Bennington that I think UCS is looking to move out of, to relocate, but also there's, there's the need for additional enrollment at that facility as well. So we were thinking, again, I think this is very much timely with the conversation we just had, which is that our community has a lot of needs and we have amazing people who are catering to support the community and meeting, meeting and working through those needs. And I think we're trying to find more and more ways to make our town facilities and public facilities and our partners' facilities to come together and partner together to provide better, you know, life in Bennington. So I think today, last time, we were given this beautiful picture of what this facility could look like. And I think today Jeff and Betsy will tell us a little bit more about some of the nitty great, nitty details of what that plan is.
Good. We hope you were comfortable and being received the last go-around. So now we're going to put some pictures with the thought.
Sure, yes.
Great. Who would like to speak up?
Okay. So it really is exciting to be back here. So thank you very much for allowing us to have some time on your agenda today. As you remember, last time when we were here, we came with this idea of being able to expand the REC Center to include early childhood services. We have been really pleased with the progress that we've made. Jeff and his wonderful team have kind of taken some of the visioning and put it down on paper, and that's what we're here with, to share with you today. We've also made some inroads into trying to seek and secure some additional funding because, you know, as you begin a building project, some ideas lead to other ideas which need to, more money and more money. And we want to do this right. We really, really do. So we have contracted with a national grant writer and we have an opportunity to submit another early Head Start expansion grant that we are also applying for 2.4 to 2.8 million dollars to help us continue to fund this facility and to make it everything we want it to be. So it's a competitive grant, but she was the one that secured the funding for us the first time. So we have fingers and toes crossed that hopefully this will be good for what I'm calling Early Head Start 2.0. So we are pleased to be here tonight to share with you some of the work that Jeff and Jack have done and trying to give us a facility that fits that footprint. If you remember, we have some limitations on the site that Jeff and Jack will talk to you about. And they have worked really hard to be able to give us a five-classroom facility, including community space, including an elevator that will go down to possibly lower space. And then they're also going to add in what a phase two might look like too, because we wanted to give you some ideas of what the potential for the REC Center might be. So turning it over to Jack and Jeff.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Goldstone, for those of you who don't know me. Jack Byer is with me at the firm, and the two of us have been working on this project together. And I would certainly entertain all the questions that you have, but I want to put it in the context of this is the beginning of the first step of many steps that would come to eventually, hopefully, lead to this really grand project. So as I say, the beginning of the first step, the first step being the design project. And we're really at the, at the early stages of the design project. We would love to get to the next stage as quickly as possible, but there are a whole lot of moving parts that we're trying to put together. So obviously, the first slide is something you're all very familiar with. And I just want to talk a little bit about what we're going to see and the context in which you're going to see it. So we've talked about phase one and phase two of this project. Phase one and phase two, from our perspective, are, phase one is the UCS project and phase two would be a potential town project. That doesn't mean that they have to be constructed in that order. They can be constructed simultaneously or there can be many years between them. But that's simply how we've been referring to them as phase one and phase two. A few, a few things just to orient you. Obviously, I do have a laser pointer, I hope works. Yeah. All right, so you've got the centerpiece here of the park, which is the existing REC Center. And I just want to point out a few things. I'm sure everybody is familiar with the site, but, you know, we have the corner of Gage Street and, let's see, it's, I'm going to do this wrong if I don't look, Bradford and Safford Street. The parking lot currently has, we believe, 68 parking places in it. And these are all things that will become relevant to the redesign that we're looking at. Of course, we have the pool here, the REC Center one-story building here, and the weight room and offices in this front wing. We have the ball field off to the west. Again, it's going to become relevant as we develop the entire site, and the three basketball courts to the south of the building. Most importantly on the site, we have Morgan Spring. And this sort of oblong shape here represents a 200-foot isolation zone. At our understanding at this point, again, it's preliminary, is that that 200-foot isolation zone is sacred and we cannot touch that zone except for introducing play areas within it. That's our current understanding. So no building components, no parking, et cetera. The parking, of course, does extend into that zone now. And our understanding, again, is that's acceptable to, in the future, for it to stay there, but not to add to it. Okay. So the first phase, and we're going to present the first phase in its entirety and then the second phase on top of that, is what's represented in blue, the light blue being the site development, the middle-colored blue being specific programmatic parts of United Counseling Services effort, and then the dark blue being new construction. So we're talking about wrapping the front of the building with the new construction. I'll talk about that little component there in a moment, but, and coming down the west side with a classroom space. The, as I said, the middle-colored blue here and around this side of the building are outdoor play areas that will be designated and required by the Head Start program. Oh, I guess one of the things to notice, I'm sorry, go back one, is that we are extending the parking area in this zone. We're going from the original 68 places to 97. Again, it's preliminary, but we believe that's where we'll be. And we're, we're going to be introducing a drop-off area close to the new entrance to the building. I do want to point out that we have an entrance location here. The old entrance, which was on the previous plan, was on this, is on this side. So we had the entrance here. This was the original entrance to the building. That's the current entrance. And then the proposed entrance after phase one would be to the front of the building.
Jeff, can I just ask, the closing entrance is in some way going back to the original entrance, right?
Yeah, it's going, it's going close to where the original entrance was, right. It's not the exact same location, but it's...
It's returning to the base.
It's returning to the front, yeah. So we'd have an entrance from the front and obviously towards the parking. Again, the existing building, reminding everybody, this is unfortunately, for our convenience, we've rotated the plans. So now, of course, the entrance is to the left, north is to the left, and this is the current entrance and the first-floor plan of the existing building. And just again, for those of you who aren't as familiar as we've become about the interior of the building, this wing is primarily the women's and men's locker rooms. And then in this wing, we have the weight room, the equipment room, and two restrooms and some offices. And of course, the swimming pool. This is what we're proposing as a building component for phase one. And I don't intend to take people through every room by any means. I'm happy to share this with you at another time, or I'm sure that UCS could do the same. But the short, the short tour is that this is the classroom area. We're looking at five classrooms, one, two, three, four, five, and all the support spaces for those classrooms and offices. We're proposing a courtyard out front. And then the new entrance that comes into this infill space, which would include a multipurpose room for United Counseling Service, an elevator, a stair to the second floor and down to the basement. Of course, the elevator goes down to the basement as well as up to the second floor. And then a commercial kitchen that would wrap around the back, which would both serve UCS as well as potentially an area that could be like a snack bar, it could be a place for food for the use of the REC Center both after the first phase and after the second phase. The one change we're making to the existing REC Center in this phase is this corner here where we propose to introduce a new entry into the same point that the old entry went. And we'd have to carve some space out of the existing offices. But that's a relatively minor introduction. It's not necessary. They can continue to use, they can continue to use the old entrance, but we thought it would be a good change to have a front entrance to both facilities after phase one.
And then just the facade.
Oh, yes. Jack reminded me that we do have a blue stripe up here as well. And what that intends to convey is an intention to, if, if the funds were available at phase one, to change the front of the building. So obviously, the hope is that we get all the way through phase two, but in the interim, we have a face of the building that can actually be of one vocabulary, one thing. So we don't have to live with the brick facade here and a brand-new building that wraps the rest of the site. Obviously, this wouldn't attach, it wouldn't have any effect on this side or the back of the building at this point. But we thought that was a nice intervention to sort of prime the pump for the phase two. Very briefly, the basement of the building. The elevator would go down to the basement and allow access to the existing basement where there are one, two, three, four usable spaces and a lot of support space, mechanical space. But those four rooms in the basement are very, very underutilized, in part because they're very hard to get to, in part because they're not the nicest of spaces. But they're, they're underused now. They're used occasionally for birthday parties and things like that, and they're really just concrete block rooms. Obviously, some, we can improve them in other ways as well, but this at least brings, brings them into an accessible area. We're proposing a very small additional basement area that would be just support would be for the mechanicals here and here and storage potentially for, for the Head Start program that is always in need of storage. And then if you go upstairs on the elevator to the upper floor, this space here, we're assuming, would simply be open to a high-ceiling space so we could have, you know, a bit of a grander entrance. We'd have, be able to have it lit from above. And then we'd have a balcony here, which would allow us to have a small viewing area that would actually be able to view into the pool. And that can be done with very small windows, really, in that wall. It's a non-structural wall and should be relatively easy to open up. And with, again, get us to the second floor in the first phase, but at this point, of course, it's a very limited second floor. We're hoping... We're hoping, again, in the second phase, we would be able to utilize more of the second floor. And this is simply the roof of the Head Start building.
Roof terrace.
Oh, yes, we've also identified a potential roof terrace, again, whether it could be part of the first, you know, an early phase of construction, or it would be part of a later phase, it would be something that would be, you know, obviously, a space to, a nice programmatic space to go outside and be able to sit, you know, on a terrace, especially after the second floor is developed in Phase Two, but it is potentially something that could be developed early on as well.
Jeff, what's the box over the entryway?
This here?
Yeah.
That's a vestibule. So, when you go back to the first-floor plan for a moment. So, we have a covered area, a covered exterior area, and then a vestibule, and that would be enclosed, so it's shown on the second-floor plan, it's shown as simply the ceiling and effect of that space.
Oh, I see.
Again, early on in design.
Yeah.
Yep. And there's the roof plan again, so this is a high roof, and those of you who are worrying about things like how the various parts of the building, how high they are relative to the existing, the natatorium roof, the gallery roof here would be higher, the entry roof would probably be comparable to the existing roof, and then the Head Start roof would be considerably lower, it's a one-story building. So, Phase Two, that's the site plan we anticipate for Phase Two. What's shown in green now is the Phase Two changes. Obviously, there's this big wraparound building that we'll get to when we look at the building plans, and we're then proposing that in the basketball courts here, what previously had been three basketball courts oriented north-south are now only two basketball courts, and we've oriented them east-west. So, we do have a reduction of one, and we are proposing to bring that into a full court, basketball court of the interior of the building, so we see a sort of a net, zero net change. And something I didn't mention before, and I should come back to during Phase One, in order to accommodate this area here, which would be outdoor play area for the Head Start program, we have proposed moving the ball field slightly to the west. It does shorten the left-field wall, we're envisioning a high, green wall there, that would be slightly shorter than the rest of the outfield, so I thought that would be thematic.
The red, yeah, the Vennington socks.
Right.
The green ones.
Yep.
The green ones.
And now, this is a full build-out of the second-phase first-floor plan. So, again, very brief tour, we're taking the area that is currently the weight room, the room that has the aerobic equipment in it, and saying that that could be a multipurpose room for the town, comparable to the multipurpose room that's proposed for the United Counseling, and that potentially, all this could open up into one big space, one big community space. These walls and this wall, we're envisioning as operable walls, so they're folding partitions, they're rolling partitions, some other way that they could be opened either completely or substantially, and then this space could be used for indoor events, winter events, places we don't have great space for now, and they would be able to be served by the snack bar here, they have the bathrooms that are here, we're, of course, introducing new bathrooms on the second floor as well. In terms of the rest of the build-out, we're going to be modifying this area in here so that there is direct access to the bathrooms from the front area, the entry area, and we're proposing the, or the removal of the men's locker room, which would then be placed back here, but I'll get to that in a moment, and this would allow us to do something that a lot of people have talked about as being a deficiency of the pool, of the natatorium, which is to provide some real seating where parents or other potential audience members can sit and watch events in the pool. We can do that relatively simply because the pool is supported by these columns, or the roof is supported by those columns, and in between those columns is really infill wall, so we can actually remove that wall fairly simply and put in glass, so that you can have a place that you could sit and actually watch an event in the pool, something that doesn't happen now, or can't happen now.
That's glassed-in, Jeff, glassed-in area?
It would have, I think it would have to be glassed-in, oh, that's, that could be open for discussion, if there's a preference that that would be open to the pool air, then it could be.
You know, I was just thinking, can you have a chlorine?
Yeah, well, that's-
Parents that sit there eight to 10 hours, they might prefer.
I was in the same place, but, again, early on, we have not had a real programming discussion with the town-
Right.
-or potential operator of the facility, and that's something we really need to have soon in order to advance this design.
As a parent of a child who's on the swim team, there's times when you want to be in the pool atmosphere, when, if your child is racing, and there's times where you want to be out of the pool atmosphere and be able to just see what's happening, so we may look at a combination of both, you know?
Got it.
To be able to give parents an opportunity to be in the pool or out of the pool, you know, depending on what's happening.
Behind that, there are some areas that we've just simply identified as potential office areas or storage areas. And then the gymnasium building, and this we're envisioning as a very simple building, a metal building potentially, something that would be, you know, relatively inexpensive to construct relative to this sort of a building, but it would be a big space that would allow us to have a full court basketball courts, or, and I say this for, very important, four pickleball courts.
Say that again?
For the record, four pickleball courts, facing the other direction, they're shown in red. And then the men's locker room, which has been relocated here, it's not designed yet, we think that's about the square footage that'll be required, and that's simply an exit stair to the second floor. This hallway here could also potentially have some windows into the natatorium, which would be another place that viewing could take place, and it's sort of a way out, but also a sort of circulation, a circulation space that ties together the two spaces, and gives us a little exit out in this area. Again, the basement, we're just showing that we have, this is SOG, for those of you who are not familiar with that abbreviation, is slab on grade, it means there's no basement proposed for that area, it's simply a concrete slab on grade for those, that construction. And then the second floor, what we've been able to achieve on the second floor, above the existing one-story rec center building, is what we're showing is five health and wellness activity rooms. So, we're talking about yoga, we could potentially have spinning up there, you could have classrooms, something just set up as a classroom, any other number of things, we don't know exactly what the program would be, but five spaces here that works into the structural grid of the building, that's why we have it. We're also proposing that we break the line of the building in this way, sort of to reflect what we're doing down in this area, and also to tie into what we think could be an improved aesthetic of that side. Again, it also gives, we believe, some structural advantage. And then a hallway that ties down all the way to the gymnasium, above which would be a running track, we have an elevator running track, and of course, that's accessible now because we have the elevator to the second floor, and a real fitness and equipment room that could go in here. So, there's been discussion that maybe the weight room would want to go on the first floor, we could also put it up here, or this could simply be an area for gym equipment. And then here, just like on this side, we could have viewing down into the swimming pool. So, now the swimming pool really connects to the building on all, potentially on all four sides.
It looks like men would have a direct, they'd come right up the stairway to the fitness room, but women would have to go all the way down the hall to the left-
To these rooms?
-and then up the stairs, and then all the way back to the right?
Um, yeah, yeah, that's the way it is right now, maybe that's not the way it should be. In fact, I don't know that there's any reason we couldn't flop that stair onto the side, and then it would be accessible from, you know, much more accessible to men's and women's rooms.
Seems like it would-
I don't think it would matter to the egress from the building. Normally, we put egress as distant as possible, at least as an initial move, but if that would be a valuable change, we certainly could make that. And then the roof plan of the entire, the entire facility. So, those are the slides that we put together, I think I've touched on all the things I had in my notes, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to entertain any questions about the design to date.
Folks, let's jump right in, if you have some questions relative to, this is Phase One and Phase Two, happened to be talking about the potential design together. Do you anticipate, though, you really need to have pretty much of a concept of both Phase One and Two at the same time before Phase One is approved?
So, I can respond.
Yeah.
I felt it was really important to have at least a preliminary look at what Phase Two might be, in order that Phase One doesn't become out of proportion with the future.
Yes.
And if, if we felt like there was momentum going forward for a potential Phase Two, then the Phase One design could be done with a little bit more confidence, and if we felt like there was not likely Phase Two, then I think the Phase One design would be very different, or could be very different. So, it's something that I think it's important to at least explore, but the answer, I guess, is no, we believe Phase One has to be able to work without Phase Two.
Okay.
And if I could just add to that, if you recall the site plan, you know, you recognize that there really is not much room to grow horizontally, and so I think it was important for us to explore, you know, the idea of going up and how we would make that all work in the event that, you know, Phase Two does actually occur.
Right.
So, with a minimal sort of effort of looking at what the potential program could be and how that might lay out and integrate with the Phase One was important from our perspective.
Chad, do you have questions you'd probably like to share? Basically, we're talking design tonight, sort of a preliminary, you know?
Yeah, I'm excited to see a lot of the stuff that you've shown us. Being a coach in this area, a lot of emphasis on lack of gym space, and even just talking with the indoor track coach last week about finding spaces in the dead of winter for her athletes to, you know, work out and get ready for their meets, so exciting to see this. Price tag, dollar amounts that have been just been thrown out there?
I think it's very, very premature-
Okay.
-to offer pricing. We've kicked out some numbers internally, but I think I would prefer to withhold that until I have a chance to even know whether this is the direction we're looking at going. We are, there's so much guesswork on our part in terms of what the program would be. We believe this program is responsive to, well, to the people we've been working with directly, as well as to at least one potential operator of the facility. I don't know if that's fair to say, but they haven't seen this yet, and this is the first viewing, in fact, for Zewatt, I know, and actually, the first one for Lorna as well, so changes that would be, may be made between now and soon could be so substantial that any pricing that I put on it now would be irrelevant. We anticipate that the United Counseling Service side, which is obviously much more advanced, is around $2.5 million.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
And that would include some of the site improvements, the ones that were shown as Phase One improvements.
I'm all set, thank you.
Well, it's pretty exciting, we'll see if I keep my voice right. This is very exciting, and I, you know, and I really appreciate the fact that you're thinking about, there's not much growth on the ground level that can be done, and you're doing an amazing job, like, thinking about how to use that space, but moving, going up is sort of what our option is, and, so, I mean, I don't, I mean, heck, yeah, let's do this! Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know how we, I don't know how to talk about this, but yeah, I, I-
You just get real-
I'm in favor of it!
Actually, Jeannie, you said something that I wanted to reiterate, because I know I said about the isolation zone, but you can see how close the isolation zone does come to the building here-
Yep.
-and how we're already not going to adhere with the parking. So, we have, you know, we do have this little bit of area in here, and we've actually looked at the possibility of talking to the town about relocating the maintenance shed that's there, because that is something that constrains the building somewhat, and maybe putting it here or here, I don't know if that's real, if that's a possibility, but that would be pretty much the only area we could grow to the east, and if we don't, if we don't see moving the field more than about 25 feet that we've moved it, we really have no way to move to the west any further than we've moved, gone either. So, you're right, we are very, very constrained in terms of space.
Yeah, well-
And moving on top of the pool is also not an option. Something else, I'm sorry, something else that I thought of and I meant to mention is that obviously, there's been concern, even the people we've spoken to about this already, about how much downtime the facility would have during construction, and we are anticipating this could be done with really minimal, Phase One with almost no downtime to the pool. There'd be some openings being cut through the block wall, but it could really be limited. And Phase Two, if it's theoretically, if it's, if it's done right, could be also minimal downtime, because the men's, new men's locker room could be built before the demolition of the old, and, you know, it might be a little more expensive to be operating it during construction, but it is doable.
That's great.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, and I love the ideas for the pool. I've always felt like the pool's felt too constrained, constrained, and this really opens it up, which I just love. Go ahead.
Sorry. Jeff, I'm a little bit with you that I do feel like we should be considering Phase One and Phase Two together. So, it looks to me like the Phase One, and Betsy, you know I'm supportive of UCS's work, and I'm supportive of everything that you do, but Phase One is the best side of our building, and best two sides of the building, really, you know, in terms of what might be developable for something else. And so, if that's going into Phase One, I think it's good, and I'm happy to have that go into UCS, but I also feel like that wraparound of Phase Two is really important for the rest of the community, and we should be considering them as a package to the extent that we can. So, we'll need to put some numbers on that pretty soon and start cracking that nut, I think. Otherwise, otherwise, the decision becomes a little bit more like, you know, do we want to move these kids to the rec center without having some of these other benefits that might be drawing people to this project? So, I guess the other question I have is about, I have two other questions, but one is about that multipurpose room that's on the UCS side in Phase One. Betsy, was the idea of that, that it would be a multipurpose room just for UCS, or is that you-
So, we look at it as two-fold, because I do believe that this was one of the key pieces of trying to bring more to the rec center. So, we do see it as something that might be used for after-school activities, different types of events, activities, but Jeff has done a nice job in giving an entryway-
Yep.
-that at the same time, then you see that kind of zigzaggy wall, you know, I keep telling him, I want the walls to disappear, I want them to be there during operation hours or something so that we have, you know, some separation from the community, but then, when kids are, you know, in care, but then I want to open it up so that we have space to use for a variety of different movie nights, community nights, all sorts of things, because I agree with you, Phase Two should happen along with Phase One, I'm very clear about that, but in case Phase Two took a while, this would allow some community space to be there, and I think that's our, that's our commitment-
Yeah.
-is trying to-
Great.
-bring some open space to the community that they can use.
And I don't mean to imply for a second that UCS isn't a good, isn't a really important thing for our community, it is a really important thing for our community, and I think the opportunity to partner with the rec center is a great opportunity, but this is our only rec center, you know, so we really need to make sure that the recreational opportunities happening there benefit the largest number of people in town possible-
And at the same-
-which I know is the way you feel about it, too.
And at the same time, I'm writing a fairly large, extensive federal grant, and they have told me that, yes, you can put the community center in, every, you know, Head Start is funding this, as long as Head Start children are going to be using the space. I couldn't put the community space in this grant and then not have, you know, the program using it for whatever reasons it might be. So, I'm trying to split hairs a little bit with this grant and say, it's okay, fund this space because we're gonna be, you know, using it, but we also, like all good partners, want to open it up and use it for the community. That's my hardest sell in the grant that I'm writing. They will be fine with all the classroom pieces, it's that additional space where they're, you know, I have to put it in some sort of framework that makes sense both for the program and for the community.
But the snack bar and the community kitchen would be also attributes that the community would benefit from as well.
Right, yes, yep, yep.
I guess the last question, I'm not sure if it's for Stuart or not, but is that-
Isolation zone.
Isolation zone, hard and fast, I mean, who do we need to talk to? Is there any way that we can budge that, or what's the cost of moving that? Is there, is it-
So, that's a 200-foot offset that has been given to us as an isolation zone. We have not done, at this point, any research into the details of what can be done, or whether that isolation zone is even valid at this point. So, it's a really good question, and we will soon have a civil engineer on board with us, working with us, to answer that question for us, somebody who has a lot more experience working with the water supply people in the state than we do, but it's been impressed upon us that the Morgan Springs is such a valuable resource that it's not something that one can take lightly, and that the best way forward initially is to try to avoid any impact whatsoever.
Well, that's true, and I think, I'm glad you're looking at that, this has the feeling of foreclosing all other future opportunities, because it's using up essentially- essentially all the usable space if we accept that isolation zone the way it is. And so it becomes a bigger, more loaded decision, I think, for the community, you know, is this, is this our final configuration of what we need for recreational facilities? If that isolation zone is somewhat more flexible, then we might, you know, we might be able to think of this more as Phase One and Phase Two, maybe there's a Phase Three or a Phase Four as things evolve.
Anyway. Good points. I think for future, I think the research has to be done on the context. I think it's important, we're talking about the early childhood for Phase One, but we're really talking about a community center. And we've got to make sure that not only our children, but our seniors and everyone else are spoken for to use this facility. Because I think, I see our senior activity really coming into this facility, and maybe there'll be other grant opportunities to make that. So the final designs for Two, more than that, really have to say, you know, seniors can use this room because it's going to be great for exercise and yoga and doing all of those things. So we bring all of our community assets basically under one roof. That's about all I have right now.
Be great.
Perennial, for me, is always using local contractors as much as we can. So it stimulates the local economy. And then building into the structure, making it suitable to have as many solar panels on the top of that building as possible.
You know, I keep saying to Jeff, I want this award-winning.
It's a green building, right?
Well, it's a healthy building. He has taught us a lot. The new term is healthy.
Healthy building, okay. Versus unhealthy?
In response to the solar panel issue, so this is south, right? So that roof right there potentially is a huge solar panel field. I mean, if that's a priority.
What's in all the roofs on them?
Yeah, obviously, the orientation of the building is something we don't control in this particular instance, and as we've pointed out, neither is the way it can expand. It is, yes, we have flat areas here as well. Obviously, the pool roof doesn't have, orient optimally, and it's also structurally, I don't know whether or not it could, it could take on load.
Stu already determined that it wasn't suitable for it.
Okay. And, you know, this is another flat roof, this is another flat roof, oh, sorry, fairly flat, this is a flat roof here, so potentially, unless it's a roof terrace, and of course, the second floor here. So we do have quite a bit of potential solar panel area.
Yeah, my vote.
Carson.
We agree with you.
Can you just remind us the grant that's already been given? How much was that?
So we have currently funding within our, within our agency, within my division, of close to 800 to over a million. It depends who's counting dollars these days. I know that sounds very strange, but there's some funding that the feds are working with me around allocating to this project. So that's why we are writing this new grant, actually writing two grants and putting it in both grants. And I said, just fight over who wants to fund this. But around 2.8 million to cover the expenses of this. We'll see whether or not they come back with all that, or they come back and negotiate it back and forth, but.
And just, did I hear, I know we're not sticking to numbers at all, but the Phase One, which is the purple.
Was around two and a half.
Two and a half, so none of the grant money would even touch Phase Two?
No, the only pieces that would, would be that entryway coming in and doing the, I always feel like the kitchens and the elevator, you know, going up and down help get you there. So, no, not at this point, and I wish I could write it in. That's why I'm trying to say that community space is really for programming.
I agree. But they do, as Betsy's saying, they do benefit the future addition. So you have an elevator that's built into Phase One, but it serves Phase Two.
I completely agree, and I'm not, I mean, I'm all for this. If there was a box I could check, I would check it. I just, I just mentioned that there's no grant money that's even on the table right now for any of the green. So we'd have to be creative in finding more grant money, taking a bonded route, taking a philanthropic route, taking a lot of routes that to roam. I'm just, just trying to think about the whole project in its entirety.
Pickleball players would probably.
Yeah, pickleball fundraiser.
I think one thing, Carson, just to highlight, is that UCS and Jeff and Jack have put in a lot of time and effort into thinking on our behalf with even giving us this gift. And one of the reasons why we haven't, I mean, Betsy and I are pretty aggressively calling up every fundraiser and grant opportunity we can think of just to even sort of start to, you know, present this idea to them. But one of the reasons why we don't have more of a, like, here are the pathways for the Phase Two part, is because until the select board actually approves this project, formally, we can't start to do that. So a little bit of it is just, give us a green signal and we'll start building those funds.
Well, I just think it was important to mention that fact. Two and a half million covers the purple, the green likely could be, I would find it hard to believe if it wasn't also two and a half million dollars. That makes five million, and we're halfway there with grant money. We just, it's nice to just look at the pieces.
And one of the things we're recommending more is that, again, you know, one thing that has, I think, pushed me a lot in wanting to do this project is that I tell myself every day since 1970, there has been no Phase One or Phase Two, which is when this building opened, '73 actually, technically. So if we're being given a Phase One, that I think will be a really great catalyst for our Phase Two, whether simultaneously we're in succession, this is our opportunity to seize it.
There actually was a Phase One when it first opened. It was really nice coming into a central sort of open room where people could sit, and it was fairly comfortable. And that's what's now the weight room now. And it was, we needed a weight room, so it became a weight room, but that, but the entrance now is, you know, a real letdown, as opposed to what you're proposing, which is, you know, kind of bringing it back to a nice space that people want to be in, that people could congregate in and enjoy.
I don't really have anything to add, other than this is amazing. I want you to start tomorrow. And I, this is sort of like another Putnam redevelopment project, you know, that focuses on downtown, and this focuses on our recreation opportunities, and both are vitally important to our community, and this is really, really exciting. So, thank you.
What do you need from us, Zerwat, to keep this moving?
I think there will be some contract-related discussions later, just to work out the details, because I know, since there is a federal grant attached to this, I think UCS will need certain kinds of formal approval for, you know, we can move forward with this and so that we understand what the land use agreement and terms will be.
I think you have our enthusiasm, but I think it's also going to be important that we invite the community into that discussion before we finalize our approval. Don't you, I just feel like I don't think we can make the decision on our own. We hear the facts and give the community an option to, opportunity to ask questions that we're not really doing tonight.
Can I ask also about the green light you were talking about earlier? That green light for you to start looking really at what it would take to do Phase Two and what's out there to help us? Am I accurate in understanding that was the piece of it? What do you, that's a different, that's a different affirmation than Phase One, right? I mean, so you, so we need something in Phase One, but you're saying that we can't really move forward on really thinking about how we would fund a Phase Two unless the select board says, yeah, let's go for Phase Two as well? Is this accurate?
Yeah, I think tonight we could say, go for Phase One, Phase Two plus, or whatever. But there may be folks in the community who would like to comment on the gymnasium or some context of it, not to change the fact that we're not moving forward, but maybe asking questions about that we haven't thought of.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, and I mean, again, I think Jeff has, and Jack both emphasized, these are kind of early designs, and they've very thoughtfully made this, you know, given us this design. And critically, I think, I mean, I totally understand where that need for a next round of community feedback is, but it's important to emphasize, too, that this is not just coming out of Betsy and Zerwat had a dream, this is coming out of community surveys, this is coming out of Vermont Community of Rural Development, community visit. This is actually coming out of years of community feedback. So I think what's important is to make sure that what years of community feedback have pointed to is still contiguous with the community's aspirations right now.
Yeah, exactly. We're not going to revisit surveys and discussions and all of that, but I think it's just important to community, when the, sort of like the final plans are presented to the board, that we make sure that the community hears and has an opportunity to comment on it.
But are we, as a board, I guess, I'm trying to distinguish between the specific plans and a plan to move forward. Do we, as a board, need to say?
Yeah, I mean.
Go forward, we want to, we want to see a Phase One and Two, and we're voting that, yeah, we want to try and go for this, so let's take the next step to figure out.
I don't think a motion and discussion would be inappropriate, because it does give the confidence to folks to continue to move forward in the context of, yes, we want a Phase One and with the Phase Two, and you have the board basically consensus, I think, probably. We don't know the numbers, we don't know the final, but it's like, you can't get any further without having the board saying, yes, we're fully and completely behind you, which we did back in May, June, or whatever. But I think this even broadens that discussion. So I'll entertain a motion for that.
I was paying for them to move forward on Phase Two, though. I mean, there's, you're at a point now where it sounds like Phase One, you're, you're going to redesign based on what you said if we're not in support of Phase Two. At some point in the discussion, you had said Phase One likely will change in appearance, exterior, and a few other things if, if we choose not to move forward on Phase Two. I'm guessing at some point your billing's going to change from UCS to the town of Bennington for more detailed plans, and, I mean, this is a kind of a bigger discussion.
Okay, I don't know. And how can you lead us to that point?
So my understanding is that we are designing Phase One to stand on its own without having to have Phase Two. There are some pieces to Phase One, like the rooftop garden or the entryway, that might need to be adjusted if Phase Two was not a consideration or something to plan around. Am I correct in that, saying that?
Certainly you are, but I think it goes beyond that. And some of the things we haven't yet addressed, we don't have an exterior design, we haven't selected materials for the building. So the selection of materials may be something that would be very different if we have a brick building that's there now next to the building that we're building. We might bring some of those elements in so that it doesn't feel like two buildings sitting side by side. Likewise, I think if there was absolutely no enthusiasm for Phase Two, the likelihood of the elevator and stair to the second floor and basement would be questioned, because that's a lot of investment on the part of UCS for relatively small, you know, programmatic reason or need for UCS. They don't, they don't need a view into the pool.
I felt like we're getting consensus on Phase Two, but the consensus needs to be vetted out, and the idea of some community input. Some where the pricing is going as far as just billing. I just think there's a, there's some components here that we're not fully addressing. We just all give a green light to it. Someone making a motion, I don't even know what we're.
It'd have to be a motion of support. So it seems to me like it would have to be a motion that we, and I would be willing to make this, but a motion to, you know, move forward with Phase One with an aggressive commitment to moving forward with Phase Two to the extent that the town can afford it. So I think that we need to get a lot more specifics before we commit our town to any debt or any expense. But I guess, I'd like to make that motion, and maybe I could rephrase it as a, a motion to strongly support Phase One, and with that aggressively pursue all possibilities for Phase Two, subject to future public comment and input.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, that works for us. I need something to put into the grant. That it's, that says that you are behind this. Again, you know, this is all future funding, we need to secure that, too, but I need to put it into the grant that you are firmly.
Well, the other thing is the grant turnaround time is very aggressive. It's November 26th.
Yeah, so it's a very tight time.
So having a confirmation and from the town select board to say, yes, we support this, and yes, we're moving forward with this, has to go into the grant very quickly to be able to look at whether we can secure those dollars.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
Second. Further discussion on it? Do we all understand that basically it's a motion with two components to aggressively pursue the Phase One with the possibility of a Phase Two, not without a commitment on the town's part, but recognizing that that would be, I'm paraphrasing your motion, that will take much more consideration.
And specifics.
Okay. I think we've heard, had the discussion, questions have been asked and answered, all in favor of that? Sign five aye. That's seven in favor, and we'll sign whatever letter needs to be signed, so you can get it in.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. This is exciting.
Thank you.
It's very exciting.
Thank you, Jeff and Jack. Yeah, thank you.
We're going to have to take up pickleball.
Yes, pickleball is, we're all going to.
Go watch pickleball.
Purchase offer for 217 Washington, Stu's going to lead us through that one.
Yes.
Stu, go ahead. You shared the pictures in which are enlightened.
This was a, one of the properties that we took at tax sale back in 2016. We did open it up to a competitive bid process, received a bid that just about covered the delinquency. Unfortunately, the bidder backed out, and in that timeframe, two squatters moved into the residence, and were habitating there, much to our surprise and dismay when we ultimately did find out. We have removed them and readadvertized the property, recently received absolutely no bids. I was approached by Mark Jewitt and Rick Roy to purchase the property in as-is condition for $5,000. I've attached some photographs of the property to the proposal. This is far below the minimum that we sought to recover. However, after discussing this with Larry McLeod and Dan Monks, we have concluded that this is probably the best we're going to get. These two individuals will put the property back in productive use. They tend to be very responsible apartment owners, and we therefore are recommending that you accept this offer and we move to a closing with the two individuals. For us to maintain this house through the winter would require cleaning it up, removal probably of the two outbuildings, and securing the property substantially, potentially costing us as much as half of what we were attempting to recover in the first place.
You've seen the material that's been furnished in the pictures, and I'll entertain a motion that we accept the recommendation of the town management relative to disposition of this property at $5,000.
So moved.
Second. Further question, dialogue, discussion? Go ahead.
Because it's being sold at a value that's, it's free, essentially, are we able to put any contingencies in there relating to the grant list? I mean, the first thing I would do if I bought that house for $5,000, I'd ask for a grievance down to something close to it. So how do we put a contingency in there that if we're, from a town perspective, giving them a piece of property, how do we get a little vote of confidence that they'll stay on the grant list without a grievance?
We can, we can write that into our agreement if that is the board's desire.
Do they anticipate that they're going to immediately go into secure and approve it?
They're going to secure it, probably winterize it. They estimate it'll cost them $150,000 to bring it back into usable.
And they do great work. I mean, the houses, they've, they've already taken some buildings that were almost gone, and they've saved them. I just, I worry about our grant list, and if, got a great leg to stand on with it, but if we're giving it to them, which, it's $5,000, but for.
Mark Jewitt is adjusting great.
So how quickly will they, would they normally be able to rehab it?
Well, they're going to hit winter, I mean, they might gut it before. I don't want to speak further timeline. They could do it in a.
A year?
Quickly. Oh, they, they'll get it online before that.
Because it's April 1st, right? It's going to be reassessed.
They're going to run into winter.
I think we can, we can chat with them about that. I would, I would hope that we wouldn't be looking at some sort of a tax appeal, but given the condition of the building, it's probably not worth what it's valued at. We were prepared to sell it for the delinquency at $24,008, so we can talk with them about that, though, Carson.
I want something, if I'm going to say yes, more defined than that. Stuart, was there any, Dan, was there? Stuart, was there any, Dan, was there any healthy homes possibility for this with the hospital?
Yep. It's not in the right zone either.
All I'll say about that is this property is not worth anything. To make them pay for something, make, pay taxes on the value that's not there, it's hard for me to solve.
And so if there's no, if we're giving it away, there's no better social good it could do, Turning Point or something like that, or is it just so far gone that we, it's...
It's in horrible shape.
That's like saying the land in that the municipal hookup isn't worth anything. I mean, the land has value, the location has value.
Because the demolition costs to be so much.
I'm not disagreeing with that, but we are, we're almost giving it to them. And I just think with that comes with some cost and I don't think we should allow a grievance on it. If we're able to have some bargaining on this, it's a nice way to look at it.
Stuart, are the taxes, are the taxes towns and now next tax season?
Well, if the closing takes place now, they will own the property as of April 1, 2019. And that would be their first tax share. Currently, we own it.
So if they do and it's going to be valued as of April 1st, whether or not we have it or they have it, it's still going to be the value as of that date. So I don't think there's any harm or foul because I don't think there'll be, there's no payment. They're going to be paying on the value as of April 1st. Now, it sounds to me like they're pretty enthusiastic. They move through these things through pretty quickly and at worst, we might have a small April 1, 2019 value. 2020, I think it'll hit the grand list at a highly, highly figured out.
Under their new design? Under the remodel?
Yeah.
Might be an old point then.
All ready to vote?
Can I just make, the, this signature page is, it's not clear. I'm just making sure the original is accurate. There's no date, there's sentences that are all cut off, it's...
That was in, that was in the trying to convert it into something that we could scan and send to you.
Okay, as long as the, what they have signed is actually accurate. Okay.
So I don't, I know, the board is comfortable with the quality of their workmanship, their time limit and all that. I feel the same way. I don't want it just to sit for another three, four years and then.
It'll fall in. I looked at the place five years ago.
Yeah, and it is worth, it is worth noting that the auctioneer thought it was worth $10,000. And Larry said to me today, we'd put, you know, more than $5,000 just keeping it going this winter in terms of public safety. So it feels to me like.
We're benefiting the neighborhood.
Benefiting the neighborhood.
It's private healthy homes, yeah.
At some level, it's, but it does, I tend to be with Carson a little bit on this, that it is enough of a good deal that we should ask for some special consideration on the, on the tax thing and really motivation to have it fixed up as quickly as possible.
I think that's about the only thing you could say.
I think that's their intent. They intend to move quickly on it.
Well, then if that's the case, then they can't crave their taxes for two years. 24 months.
Well, I would say, Carson, that they would, they would probably have an argument that
once they get a building permit and begin the demolition and reconstruction, that the value of the property as of April 1 will be based on where they are in that construction process. They don't even have to appeal. That's going to be part of the building permit and the lister's effort.
Is there anything we can do on the speed, I'm just.
Getting it done?
Of getting it done? Yeah, I mean, I have no idea. I mean, I mean, is there intent to do that? But I would hate for that house to end up falling in on itself.
My guess is they're going to move quickly to secure it, probably remove the outbuildings, do what they can, and they may make it an interior job. We haven't talked about that because I frankly didn't have a decision from you folks to be able to say to them anything at all other than, well, I'll take it to you.
Well, I think the spirit is that they should secure it timely, it should be part of the deal. They should begin construction or renovation within a certain timeline and that, that's basically it.
Can we incentivize that? I know that's not part of your deal and I know that we have to get on with the meeting, but could we charge them $10,000 and make $5,000 of that a forgivable loan once it's fixed up?
It just seems like.
I'd prefer not to get into that kind of a deal. I mean, they, my goal is to get the property into their hands and let them get going.
Okay. All right, all right. Good local people.
Okay, folks, let's vote on it. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous, so you're free to move on it. Now we have the manager's report.
So, excuse me, Tom. So is there wording in there other than sell it to them for $5,000?
I'm feeling as though that the inclination is strongly against that. Nancy.
To say against this?
I'd say no.
Okay.
That's what I'm hearing back pretty clearly.
What I voted, what I felt like I just voted on was authorizing the manager to sell it as, as directed in this memo.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Despite the fact that I agree with you, Carson, I think I've been convinced that we need to get this going.
Their track record says they do things quickly and they care about this community, so I'm strongly in favor of that. If they had no track record with us.
Different call.
I would have a very different conversation and I would object to a lot of things, but these guys have some great roots in town. They do awesome projects and we're lucky to have them.
That's good. Good reference.
That's clearly heard.
Thank you.
Yep.
Under the manager's report, are we ready for manager's report?
Yes.
We only have one action item and that is a request for $500 from the select board's contingency to support the already-held sophomore career summit. We supported it last year. I think the request came in before the fact.
So the summit moved from spring to the fall just this year and that is why it's after the fact?
There you have it.
But we did, we did talk last year about putting it in the budget so that they didn't need to write a letter every year.
Yeah. I'd rather see it there.
Me too.
So would you like a letter from the sophomore summit committee or from Mount Anthony requesting that it go in the budget? Okay, then go back to Jim.
Exactly. I think we all have that feeling.
Well, it does feel like this should be addressed to our community development director, sort of. I mean, isn't this, isn't this the kind of things, Zirat, that you balance, these kinds of requests?
Well, it's going to be part of the budget.
You're making the decision for me to have it.
Yeah.
At budget time.
I guess I'd like to see it built into that part of the budget though.
Oh, we could.
I imagine that the community development program has a lot of different things that it could fund and this should be one of them.
Can we just remember when we were doing our budget meetings in January to add this as a line item to her budget? And that way it's there as a line item, we see it every year and it's there.
Okay, and then do you want a letter from Mount Anthony or is that sufficient?
I think we have a letter here and I think it's our pleasure to move it to a.
Okay, great.
That's already, they already spent, that's a very good point. They've already made the effort. So, okay, that's good. Okay, that's it, Stu?
That's it.
Other business?
Congratulations to the high school for an incredible musical, Les Mis. It was unbelievable and most enjoyable. I hope everyone listening, if they didn't get to go, you missed out, you don't miss the next one.
Good point. Carson?
Voting? I was glad some people want, I'm just kidding. Thank you to Cassie and the staff and everybody. I mean, I was there first thing in the morning, there was a line out the door and it seemed like they had every, all their eyes dotted and t's crossed. Was that just across the board, everyone felt the same way? I mean, I was only there for a brief moment in time, but.
Which amazing is the number.
My brief moment was.
Good numbers. Yeah.
I think it's the highest number since they stopped giving out donuts.
Oh, no, donuts are not coming back, are they?
Something in the library, I'll put that in there.
I don't think the donuts are coming back, but I think the turnout was just over 50% if I remember.
Yeah, it was.
So thank you to everyone who was involved in that. I mean, it was.
Great point, Carson.
It was great and they were smiling. It was a nice experience and congratulations.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the voters of District 2-2 in expressing their faith in me and I will do everything I can to deserve their vote and in putting their faith in me by their, by their vote. Again, thank you very much. Sorry.
Jim's representing everybody, not just you two.
Yes, exactly.
Every, the town of Bennington. Is there anything else, Jim? I think it's important that we do recognize a couple of, one is the Vermont Business Magazine Rising Stars, Caleb Becker. Mike Cutler just happens to be keeping us on the air. Congratulations, Mike. Michelle Morocco, The Lightning Jar. Chris Oldham, Coalition for the Homeless. Forrest Whalen, Bennington Rescue. That's a really high, high honor for rising stars and we expect them to continue through their maturity, once they get through puberty, to continue to lead our community. Also, the, there was an additional, the Chamber of Commerce, Vermont Chamber of Commerce has recognized a couple of, a number of folks, but including in our community, Bill Colvin of the Bennington Regional, County Regional Commission, John Shanahan of the Bennington Downtown Alliance, and Paul Coracio, President of the Manchester Business Alliance and TPW Real Estate. These are all leaders that we can look to as we need experts and the like. There are a lot of good folks and these are just real good examples of worthy folks that got recognized for their work.
Tom, I just want to make one note of that. It was 40, under 40 from around the state.
Yes.
And how many from Bennington?
We had seven, I think, in Bennington County per se.
Not too bad. Something in the water.
Yep.
So happy Veterans Day and it was, I'd like to thank the veterans that put on a great bell ringing on Sunday. It was a nice parade and it was, we were lucky with the weather, it was a good event and we're very, very thankful for all of our veterans. Today is the 12th, so property taxes are due on the 13th and there's an 8% fee if you are late, so this is everybody's fair warning on that. And I would remind all the people who like to get outside that this is rifle season from, from November 10 through November 25th. So just bear that in mind when you're out in the woods. And the Bennington Area Trail System has asked people to be very respectful, private landowners who would like to hunt on their land and maybe not use the trails at this time of year until we get through rifle season. So that's it for me.
Thanks, Tom.
Great. So I just want to point out that the two not so under 40 individuals who won the Chamber Above and Beyond Awards, Bill Colvin and John Shanahan, were among only 12 people around the state. So, yeah, I mean, to have two from Bennington is pretty darn special. So we really do.
Above and beyond.
We are above and beyond, yes. And, and I guess a similar note, nonprofits need to have their budget information and greatest hits to us in just a few days, right?
That's correct.
Okay, have we gotten any?
We have two agencies that have submitted, plus the Bennington County Regional Commission.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just a quick public service I saw on Channel 3 News tonight, Bennington was on the news. If you buy your lottery tickets at the Shell Station on North Side Drive, $1.5 million ticket was sold in Bennington, so check your tickets, it wasn't mine, but try State Megabucks and maybe make a donation towards our new UCS Phase Two, Phase One.
That was great.
Yeah, that's good. The Shell Station, yes, on North Side Drive.
I'd like to make one more comment. We, I should, we as a community should thank Senator Leahy for coming down and visiting.
Yeah, he was very interested and interesting Friday. He's very impressed by the community and the steps that we're taking to basically survive because we were at the tipping point not too long ago and with the 70 individuals and institutions that have participated in the Bennington renovation restoration, he was really impressed. But he also said, he recognizes this is just the start and he has offered community staff to come into the community to see if there can be a further assistance going forward. So, and, and he meant it, it wasn't just a passing statement. So, yeah, it was great to have the senator here. We do have a need for an executive session for a couple of contract matters and real estate, so we'll move quickly in that. It's 25 of nine. I'd like to go right into that executive session if I could, once everybody clears. Thanks. Second?
Second.
We're in executive session. Thank you.